In chief the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Pierstos.
Here.
Mr. Penrod.
Here.
And Mr. Orr is down here, Mr. Reimer is absent, Mr. Esposito is absent, Mr. Tobias is absent tonight, Mr. Orr.
I'm present.
Present, and I'm present, Randy, so we've got four for him. Any additions, deletions this evening?
None.
No deletions, deletion. Hearing of patrons, anybody out there want to talk? Big crowd tonight, so, okay, thank you. Presentations and recognitions?
None this month, the basketball squad is currently in Indianapolis and they're being recognized at the Pacers game this evening, so for some reason they thought that was more important.
Yeah, so just so everybody knows, we will recognize the basketball team, but they're, you know, and along with that, like, I've talked to a few people out in the community, like, recognition, you know, all the way, our bus drivers, right, our food service people, I mean, there's plenty of people to recognize every month, so we, you know, lot, lot of recognition to go around, but that was, that will happen on that. Got, you know, some good comments, feedback from Mr. Castle on some events with special education, some thing, you know, things at the independent schools, so, a lot of good things going on in Manchester, a lot, really a lot to recognize, so. Financial report, Dr. Stevens.
Whichever you bring up first, Randy. Operation Fund, again, and we're going to board you, numbers are what they are, format's the same, so, when you come across revenue, we underestimate revenue, about 4,000, and total expenses were 16 over, part of that, we had, usually we have two billings for fuel, we had three this month, that was about 5,000 piece, a few other odds and ends that came in, some licensings and that sort of thing that we had programmed for later, so that's what the change is. So again, down to the variance, salaries, this, this number, we just underestimated every month, so we'll make that adjustments. So total monthly expenses, 16, so what we anticipated was a projection of 394, we ended up with 373, so 20,000 dollars off, so, and just a graph, so, education? So, education, again, coming across the top, about same number, so 19,000, from what our projections to our variance, when you come down at the bottom, and again, some of the, some numbers in here, most of this was in claims, so, our, we are projecting 824 in expenditures, we're actually 52, and for the full month balance, we're anticipating 1753, actual is 1734, so 19,000 dollar variance. Again, claims, 13, 14,000 dollars, again, some of those were licensing fees that came in that were off schedule, so, overall, we're still holding our own, and everything is year end, at least right now, is looking pretty good. Now, again, session ends, you know, Adam, we'll be talking about this in a few minutes, a lot of, a lot of impact of coming out of the session, and very little of it's going to be good. I have some numbers, I was going to do a presentation tonight on a variety of different factors, but the information that went to the Senate yesterday, and Senate Bill One, basically blew my prior presentation, so I'm going to wait until the session's over, and we know exactly what they're going to do. So, any questions on where we're at financially? Still holding our own, so we're still positive year end, better shape than what I projected two years ago, and each month gets a little better, so.
Thank you, Dr. Stevens, got to get a motion to approve the financial report.
Motion?
Mr. Pierstos, a second.
Second.
Mr. Penrod, discussion?
Okay.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, Randy. Consent items, claims, hopefully you guys take a look at the, again, we're kind of a, we're, our expenses heavy people, right, but then, you know, you throw benefits in there, and then we've got, you know, payables in there, so, usually if there's questions, you can, we can talk about that in the meeting, or you can discuss that with Dr. Stevens and Mr. Castle independently minutes. Resignations? Go three oh.
Raquel Klein, paraprofessional at high school, Lynn Harness, MIS, fourth grade teacher, and Emily Hill, high school, assistant volleyball.
I'd like to thank you for your service, right, so, then grants?
Yes.
For 500 dollar deal on there? Yeah, we'll get donations, but was there another grant for like 500 dollars, I thought, on there or something? Yeah, so it's attached, so.
Okay.
And then 5.5 donations, Mr. Penrod, you want to take a stab at that?
All right, I'll have to take a couple breaths between all these, but again, thank you.
We appreciate you.
This is long, so, 220 dollars to MIS for the zoo trip, Tri Kappa, 166 shirts to the senior high school for the state bound 2025 basketball shirts from Shepherds Chevrolet and Advanced Landscape Property Management, 500 dollars to the junior senior high for girls and boys golf from McKee Mortuary, 500 to the junior senior high school cheerleading and instrumental machine and development, Inc., 200 dollars to junior senior high for FCA, for FCA from the boys basketball, 100 dollars to junior senior high to FFA from anonymous donor, 200 dollars to junior senior high, FFA from another anonymous donor, 50 dollars junior senior high for teacher appreciation, George and Terry Eckert, 500 dollars to junior senior high for the 2025 senior class trip from anonymous donor, 374 dollars junior senior high to the library from the junior senior high library and audio visual, is that correct? Okay. 800 dollars junior senior high to the boys basketball from the American Legion, additionally 200 dollars to the boys of basketball from Patrick Bishop, 500 dollars to the junior senior high track and field from anonymous donor, 5,100 dollars to the junior senior high FFA from anonymous donor, 1,000 dollars junior senior high cross country pavilion, and we're going to get quite a few donations on that one here, so, anonymous donor, 600 dollars to junior senior high for the drama program, T-shirts for Mean Girls from Manchester Family Dentistry, 50 dollars to the, and these are all going to be to the cross country pavilion, just to save myself a few words, so, 50 dollars junior senior high from Edith Stone, 100 dollars, again, for the pavilion, Sarah and Tim Davies, 100 dollars from Joyce Mills, 200 dollars from Tim and Donna Martin, 1,000 dollars from Batteries Plus, 100 dollars from John and Beatrice Nar, 250 dollars, again, to the cross country pavilion, Keith and Joanna Herman, 250 dollars from Dick and Jane Lemming, 500 dollars from Dan Narrigan, CPA, Narrigan and Purdy, 250 dollars to the pavilion from Thomas and Shannon Pinson, 100 dollars from Kyle and Kristen Short, 500 dollars from Gaunt and Sun Asphalt, 500 dollars to the pavilion from North Manchester Monument Company, 1,000 dollars from John Whitcraft, 500 dollars from Kyle and Kelly Penrod, 250 dollars from Janobi Oki, I apologize if I did not say that correctly. 250 dollars to the pavilion from Kevin and Sheila Fitzpatrick, 50 dollars from Lon and Melissa Hatfield, 50 dollars from Stacy and Danny Thomas, 650 dollars to the pavilion from Glenn and Susan Scharfman, 1,000 dollars from Matt and Teresa Mize, 300 dollars from Corinne Spencer and Gary Heiser, 500 dollars to the pavilion from Terrell and Company, 250 dollars from Jeff and Rebecca Lemna, 2,000 dollars from anonymous donor, 250 dollars for pavilion from Melan Anita Souter, 500 dollars from Mark and Nancy Smith, 500 dollars from Carolyn Underwood, 200 dollars from Claude and Kathy Markstaller, 2,300 dollars for the high school cross country pavilion from Haynes Eisenberg and Skiba LLC, 1,000 dollars from anonymous donor, 1,000 dollars for the pavilion from Three Rivers Running Company, 1,000 dollars from Luke and Stephanie Pinkerton, 1,000 dollars from Joe Hope, and 1,000 dollars from Randall and Gina Sparrow, all of those were for the high school cross country pavilion, totaling 3,000, 30,544 dollars. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes, which is incredible, and I got to say, like, you know, the support of this community to the schools is pretty awesome, and I, you know, not, not to harp on the boys basketball game, but I mean, I'll tell you what, turn, you know, looking at the support and the community, and the way people traveled down there, I got, it gives me goosebumps thinking about it right now, and I heard some comments from folks in Indianapolis that we kind of turn, you know, turned it into like South Manchester there for a little bit during that game, so, you know, this goes to show like the, the support, and especially, you know, I've got, I've got to admit, I've got a couple comments about the, the facility, you know, for the cross country, you know, that's a good example of somebody taking the bulls by the horn, like, and running with it and getting something done with it, so the support is just amazing to see on that thing, so, really appreciate the efforts of Mr. Sarvo and all the people involved in that, so. Facility rentals, I think we had one?
We have one, it's a Squire Volleyball Club, April 13th, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and basically using the high school gyms, and they will take care of its custodians, about 250 people is what they expect.
Yeah, so this is a, this is a little thing Tony called on, right, with the, somebody canceled a tournament, so we picked it up, which is a good, good deal to, you know, invite people to the school, so, motion to approve the consent items?
Make a motion.
Mr. Penrod, a second. Mr. Pierstos, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, Randy. Amazing. Employment?
We have Eva Monzoni, Junior Senior High School Assistant, Girls Assistant Volunteer, Heather Terslinger, Intermural Soccer Coach, Jen Birch, Intermural Soccer Coach, Alay Kaufman, Intermural Soccer Coach, Amrissel Kamenzey, EHC Treasurer and Bookkeeper.
All right, and why don't we just tie six two since Rick's not here?
Okay.
So let's add Andrea Esposito.
Andrea Esposito for Intermediate Soccer Coach.
So usually anything we break out.
Yep.
So, motion to approve employment.
So.
Mr. Orr, second. Mr. Penrod, any discussion? Welcome aboard. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Four zero.
Next, we have the handbooks, this is a second reading, you already had the handbook, so I'm not going to go through them, any questions, and we can defer until your next meeting for adoption, if you prefer, if you have any questions that you have for...
Well, what I was going to do is basically survey the people that are here, anything outstanding on, on these documents that you want to address, and, so we, like, we could defer.
Could defer, could approve.
If you want to, or if you don't, if you don't have a lot, we could, usually we go through these separately for that reason, but, you know, if nobody has anything, we could either approve it as one, or we could, you know, approve it separately, so.
If we approve it tonight, then for roundup and enrollments, we have all the documents and paperwork, so when people come in and sign up, they have all the handbooks and stuff, where if we wait until May, some of that will already be accomplished as far as enrollments and that sort of thing, so.
I like to kind of ask the administrators, you know, any significant changes, that way, if there's anything highlighted, I don't know, Linda, do you have anything that you wanted to hide?
Personnel.
Okay.
I had a couple personnel switches.
Okay. Okay.
I highlighted it yellow.
And again, I think, you know, in our strategic meeting, if you guys would kind of give us some feedback on when that could happen or something, I think we, you know, the Neola thing on policies and procedures need to, you know, we could, you know, discuss that a little bit as well on this, so, but I mean, these, I mean, updates should be, right, from legislative changes, which we don't know, you know, there may be some infliction there, and then the other thing is lessons learned, right, what we learn through, and again, the policies aren't just, you know, that's why we don't just use laws, policies, we're interpreting that as guidelines, right, for the organization to keep ourselves out of trouble, some of the things we've seen in the past, so.
Are these shared with attorney, just to, so they're all?
Yep.
Okay, that's.
Tim.
Yeah, and there are times when, after a session's over, he'll send us language as well, if we have stuff we have to adopt.
And that's included as an amendment to what we approve. I'm going to go ahead unless you think otherwise, and move that we approve all four handbooks and the amendments as presented.
So it'd be five with the technology.
Five, excuse me.
Okay, got a motion?
I would second that motion.
Mr. Penrod, second to that motion, any discussion? Be comfortable, Casey?
Uh, only if, I mean, have we even asked the three that are missing, if they had any concerns with it?
This was presented last month, so they've had 30 days till it's over, we haven't heard.
But we haven't had any comments back from them, right? Okay.
I've had nothing from anybody on the handbook, so, used all the emails, so.
And it doesn't prevent us from, if something comes up that we find, we can amend it mid-year if we need.
Yeah, you'll have to oblige if there's something comes out of legislature, and there will be.
So, there's still opportunities, we're not locked in for two months.
Yeah, these have to be living documents, right, things change, and we, but it's, again, you also don't want to get in the habit of just duplicating, again, we should, you know, there's no way in education that these things should change, right, with the changes that we see, but these are really extensions of our policy, right, and that's the board's responsibility is policy, and then these guidelines and books and stuff are created, you know, with those policies, so, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, Randy. And that, and you know, and that invitations to the public as well, I don't know how many people in the public actually read, hopefully they read the parent student handbook.
Wouldn't issue, they do.
Yeah, they, right, one of them, so, but that's, you know, again, that's good input, so, now moving on, discussion, Heartland update, anything to update?
Just very briefly, they are into the roof project and running into some wet insulation, which, which we could have foreseen that, we probably did, but, but continuing to make progress, and hopefully, hopefully in another month, we'll have a good word on that, and also just getting ready for graduation, which is a pretty exciting time for everybody, so, there'll be more.
Would you mind, like, shooting the invitation to the whole board when that comes out for the Heartland graduation? If you get that, I think you get that, you know, so.
I will do that, and I wasn't under the impression that you would not have received that.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's the first time around for me, but yes, I'll make sure everybody has it, I think, it's the Honeywell Center, just doing it from memory, maybe the 17th of May, something like that.
Yeah, and again.
I'll have to wait a bit, no, got that in my other folder, I'm sorry.
There's a ton of effort, you know, there's a lot of things with invites, right, so it's really hard to hit all this stuff, I know people, you know, so, okay, awesome. Financially, I think one of the things, you know, to talk about strategically is how do we, you know, that financial vehicle for updates and maintenance, especially with kind of what's going to happen with our funding, and so I think that's going to be an important strategic point to, to look at as well, so.
And this bill, Senate Bill One, I have not seen, and maybe, Adam, you have, any language when it comes to CTE, but there was some discussion that CTE funding may change as well.
That's what I mean, like, you tell it's over, it's not over, so.
One of the proposals is very draconian when it comes to how they would fund it, because it's upon completion, not going through the process.
Which present, you know, and we're already challenged cash flow, right, that's why we pay for bridge loans that we shouldn't be taking in the first place, so, yeah, I won't get going, so, and I, and I wanted to comment, you know, on your comment last time, you know, Heartland's been very creative, so some of the, like, these kids, I've got welding, robotics, wanted to get like nursing in, but they're tied in a different location now, but these kids are, they have their discipline, then we actually certified them, like lean Six Sigma Green Belts, and then some of them also did the CDL that you were talking about.
Correct.
So we kind of call it stackables, and that's a real, you know, that's another cool thing that, you know, Heartland does for these kids, because you know, you know, the more opportunity, the more touch points they have for some type of employment or something, I mean, I kind of like to have my CDL myself, right, jump that big rig and ride it around, so.
Buses, buses.
Buses?
Buses, huh? Well, and again, you know, it's, it's like our bus drivers, my wife drove bus, and I tell you, getting out by Liberty Mills in the winter with a bus full of kids on icy roads and stuff is a sweet little trip, you know, so, we do recognize them. Legislative update, Adam?
So, before I get to Senate Bill One, Senate Bill 287, which has to do with school board candidates and political affiliation, it looks like the current version does not include a primary election, which they were kind of pushing for that, so it would just be at a general election for that, and then you do not have to declare a political party. You can, but now they've added a box to be nonpartisan if you don't want to disclose, so that, I believe that'll probably pass now, if that's been added to that bill. Senate Bill 482, it talks about absenteeism, I've mentioned this before, kind of, I think something will move through right now, it's, requires a school to have an attendance conference with students and guardians after five unexcused absences, but no later than 10, so that kind of gives a little more variation for the school to kind of address that, and then it limits, the schools cannot expel K through eighth graders for chronic absenteeism, so I don't know how often that happens, but they're limiting it, so you can't do that now, so, they'll work with kids on that. Senate Bill 146, which is teacher compensation, so we're talking about maybe reduction in, in income for school systems and other political units, or local units of government, this would increase the minimum teacher salary from 40 to 45,000, required to go into effect July 1, so, that kind of puts you in a bind, where you're saying you got to raise that up, but yet, we're going to maybe cut your funding, so that could pinch the schools a little bit more, so, and then Senate Bill One, looks like as far as for 2026, they are going to still leave at least a 4% max levy growth potion, which is helpful for one year, but, long term, it's hard to project, particularly our school system, trying to keep that in mind and looking ahead, the last, I guess it was kind of the Ways and Means, there were some amendments thrown out there that didn't go, but that did pass as a present form, it's, it's really just shifting and getting rid of business personal property, moving forward and kind of phasing that out, and additional, just providing a lot of homestead credits to reduce real property taxes with their shift to an income tax based system, but there's a whole lot of nuances with income tax and how it's distributed, there was a lot of conversation with, the county's going to get, to basically have, the county council would have control of income tax and how that's distributed, and basically you'd have to go request funding and how that's distributed, so, it's still a mess, it's still a mess down there, but I think everybody in, in all forms of government are just concerned about what's, what's the future hold, and, and some of it's just short term thinking, the next two to three years, but a lot of the outward projections, seven, eight, nine years from now, it could be devastating if, if it doesn't get it right, so, there's, there's still got probably another five or six weeks, and if they don't get it hashed out, they might go to a summer recession, it could be a long one, so, yeah, I don't know what the latest, I mean, since they kind of re-twisted it again, I don't know what their projected losses could be, because they did have a projection before fiscal analysis, but.
Analysis came out at four o'clock today.
Okay.
So, LIT, Local Option Income Tax, LOWIT, will be restructured, and the rate for all counties will be 2.9% under the new statute, if this passes. The breakout of that is 1.2% for the county general purpose revenue, 0.4% for fire protection emergency medical services, 0.2% for non-municipal civil taxing unit general purpose revenue, and 1.2% for certain cities and towns that are now eligible to adopt municipality LIT rates, they're saying it's not there. That's a 150,000 dollar hit for us, just off the top, and that's Operation Fund. What their projection as of the four o'clock distribution, so, based upon the property tax relief language in Senate Bill One, Wabash County is projecting in fiscal year 2026, 815,000 dollar net loss of property taxes, 27, and these are not cumulative, these are each individual year, 727,000, and in 2028, 2,244,000. Now, you got to think, schools take up about 50% of that rate, this is countywide, so there's three school districts, so, that's Operation Fund, so, just ballparking it for us, without seeing any numbers, 400, 500,000, on top of 150,000 hit for LIT, so, and again, like I said, I had a presentation I was going to do, and wow you with my finesse, and that all died four o'clock, because I hadn't seen this yet, and this was just the Senate, or the governmental unit that does all the fiscal impact studies, so Legislative Services Agency, so, we have no idea what's going to happen, been around for a long time, and I will tell you, long sessions, they put all this stuff out, and at 11 o'clock, before the day the session has to end, 11 o'clock PM, they'll come together and it will dictate what's going to happen to us, and it may not be any of this, it may be better, it may be worse, but nobody will know, because they don't have any discussion, they'll just come in chambers and they will start dictating, so.
And I would guess there's going to be a special session.
The governor's always said, if it doesn't match what he wants, then he will call a special session.
So.
Now, again, I will, our budget cycle starts July.
Right.
As far as putting all the numbers together, so if they have a special session, it won't happen until July, which means, we don't have any information probably coming out until maybe August, probably September, for adoption has to occur in November, so, it's going to be an interesting year, so.
Well, and like, so, some positive things though, like, you know, so there is choice, right, if you wanted to declare or not, I'm kind of being a little facetious, but when it, like, like what this is, is about choice, and not, and like, I, I'm fine with choice, but one of the things, like, you know, in leadership, and I had a little deal myself, and I just think I'll save it, right, but, you know, when you look at this whole scenario, we're shifting property tax to income taxes, basically what's going to happen, now, you've had a couple companies, Brookshire Hathaway and Blackrock come in, right, buy up the homes, home prices of what, elevated, right, this, you know, government's got more property tax out of it, because it hinged right on these rates, so you, so the condition of people's living, right, is not good, and this community's one of them, housing, so we're putting up housing, right, our draw, so, so the other thing, you get school boards, so, our ability to veto TIFs was taken away, right, and that's all right, I mean, Adam's on the, I mean, we can discuss this stuff, so that's taken away, that's any future growth.
For revenue for schools as well, right, with anything good that happens to this community.
So if you look at this, we're getting boxed in, and it's just going to continue, and that's why I'm going to keep pushing on the continuous improvement button, on this strategic plan, we're going to talk about that, but we're going to start doing some value stream mapping, and one, and one of the things with public education, when you're talking choice, everybody, like, public education cannot be eliminated. And one of the things with public education, when you're talking choice, everybody, like, public education cannot be eliminated. And what we need in choices, we need every choice to be the strongest. And that's really what I'm doing on this floor. That's the reason I'm in here, is for our kids and put, and the fact, you know. So when you guys look at this, you, we also can't keep doing the same thing in public education. And that, when you ask that about the legislators, that's one of the things that you have to think about, is what can we do differently? What can, you know, as process-wise, you know, where is cost savings? So, so last couple little nuggets, what are we doing on cost savings? So a couple things that, to throw out and get your opinion on. Insurance, benefits, how costly is that to us?
That's about 60%.
Yeah. We have leverage, so you're looking at different means with leverage on our insurance, right? Are teachers state employees?
Well, they're state employees as far as teacher retirement's concerned, but they're local employees when it comes to benefits.
Okay, why?
Because it's always state rights and legislation.
Okay, there's one to them, right? Construction costs, bridge loans. Why can we not, you know, if you want to talk about saving money, instead of like, you know, I heard a lot about, you know, we're number one when, when consolidation comes up, Wabash County, you know, our three schools. So if competition's good between charter schools, charter versus public, why isn't competition good between charter and charter, public and public? That's another thing I don't understand about this whole thing, right? So to me, we make our school as strong as possible. That's our number one job, you know, it shouldn't be limited on this. The construction and the finance, you know, you know, Governor Daniels comes in, he looks at, you know, let's take our, our road repairs and stuff. What did he do? He consolidated those contracts, right? How many millions of dollars of savings did we get out of that? Why can't we look at doing the same thing in the schools versus squeezing the budgets of the independent schools? Why aren't we looking up top at where the huge savings is? You know, that, that's my question to them. That's not to you, really.
No, I understand, but the, the problem is, like, construction, if you're not doing construction, you don't have any way of saving.
Well, I mean, buying power with construction firms, but, you know.
I understand that, but again, unless you're actually doing a construction project of some sort.
But what you do, right? And, and that may be a long time coming, right?
Exactly.
So that's another strategic.
So if you're, if you're a doughnut school, you're doing construction all the time because your population's increasing. If you're, if you're rural, like, in us, like, 66% of the school districts in the state, we're stagnant. You hope you're stagnant.
And then?
Or you're, or you're losing enrollment. So there, there's a lot of factors. You know, my, my question has always been, why doesn't the state have a uniform salary schedule for teachers?
Bingo.
Or, or regional salary schedules? Instead of having 300 school districts bargain every year for money we don't have, their state employees, as Mike points out, by contract, I mean, we have to staff sign a state teacher contract, but it seems to me that you would have more leverage if the state were bargaining. I've appro, I approached that with numerous legislators over the year, and there is, we all want to do that.
Okay, well, and that, and then to their defense, that's, you know, being a legislator's not an easy job. I haven't been one, right? But I can know what it's like on the school board, so that, you know, there's a lot of things. They're not in gichi gimpatsu, right? They're not in, they're not within these schools, and so they're, they're leaning on people's voice. And that's where, you know, like, the calls from Terry, you know, I think Terry at ISBA, that guy's, you know, he's like very energetic in this, you know, in the middle of this stuff. And so the other thing is, like, you know, people calling them and giving them their input versus everybody being silent, right, and just complaining about stuff. Those people's numbers are on, you know, they're on the website, their emails are on there. Andy Z, Craig Snow, like, we met out at the restaurant here a few weeks ago and talked about a lot of these issues. So give them your voice, because they need that voice to, to make decisions on this, so, you know. And we'll, we'll kind of see what shakes out on this, but I could, you know, I can tell you this, I mean, and whether you agree, our future is going to be challenging, right? So it's, like, we, we have to look at ways, and one of the things I want to do, right, is value stream mapping, where we go into the schools and we get the voice of all the people as far as any ideas they have, and do that. And that may go against everybody's little chain-of-command thing. I don't really care, to be honest with you.
We'll talk about that as a retreat, because you are pushing an area that you may not want to push.
Well, I, yeah, we'll, we'll do it. It works in every other industry.
In, in your desk, there's a half-sheet. Those are possible dates, if you would look at that. And if you can't do it tonight, just let me know what, what your available, the availability is, and we'll put something together, four hours. And if these don't, dates don't work, shoot me something else that works in your schedule.
Where, where are we doing this, though?
Here.
Okay. Here.
No, it, it may be a Stevens Kitchen event, but it'll be here. Nobody knows that yet, so.
Those are pretty, those are pretty good.
Yeah, I'll take that. And it may not take four hours, right? We need to talk about a few things, so.
Well, while we're here, Saturdays, it doesn't matter to me, but are Saturdays or Thursdays better? I prefer Thursday.
Yeah, me too.
I prefer Thursday, if that helps.
Well, you got a couple.
Those sort of things don't work, that's fine. I just threw dates out, so.
We'll let, we'll get back.
Okay.
We'll get back with you, but.
Slip, ease the melody if you want, or.
Yeah, doesn't matter. Text me or email me or miss me or Randy or Tony, we'll all get it together, so.
You already have an agenda, what that's going to look like, okay.
We'll get the date first, then we'll get stuff out to you.
Good.
But we'll send out, you know, if you have things you want to add to an agenda, we'll send all that out to you, so.
Is Wendy going to come?
I do have one question, since we're on the topic of how well the basketball team did. What happens to the gate? Is that distributed amongst all the schools? That's just, so it's just, okay.
Yeah, it's a, it's a graduated scale, so.
You know, and I got some comments about some things that happened down there, you know, and just for the people that had those comments, we are in, like, the school's in very little control of what happens during that deal, right? Zero control. The people have complaints about what, like, the net cutting and stuff like that. You talk to IHAA, right, on, on some of those issues, so.
Guy riding the show down there on the floor, he, he had it together, because he got him, he got him on and off.
Yeah, 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 they were, they were messing around.
Even ticketing had, we have nothing to do with that. That is all, now shall.
I thought the coolest part was Manchester, there's a lot of people still in there, right? So they formed a police line to kind of push us out, you know? So it's kind of, I thought that was neat. Motion to adjourn? Oh, sorry, Casey.
No, that's good.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Mr. Penrod, second? Mr. Fierce does? All in favor?
Aye.